Okay, it's uh. Okay, it's six o'clock and we like to get this um training, I mean this budget meeting going. Yeah, I've been wanting to do that for the longest, man. First, we can start with a call, caller order, um roll call. Madam Clerk.
Okay, Mayor Mahoney. Councilmember Robinson. Vice Mayor Dancy.
Inside.
Councilmember Gunn. Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Forgrave.
Here.
We like to do adoption of the general. Moved. Supported. In the discussion? Uh, is it a roll call?
In the interest of time, yes. Vice Mayor Dancy.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood. Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Forgrave.
So I guess we start now with the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six budget workshop. Mister City Manager.
Thank you, Mister Vice Mayor. Welcome, everyone. This is to present the budget to City Council. Provide you guys an opportunity to interact directly with department heads. To go over their department budget, their different activities. They'll all be coming up to the podium. I'll be keeping time and keeping an order going on things. Try to break things up from big, big presentations and smaller presentations and give everybody's brains a break. Before I turn things over to Heather Ennis, our Finance Director, who will give you the budget, the, the real budget highlights. I just want to say how proud I am of staff for working with me and Heather to put together a balanced budget that uh holds our fund balance at thirty percent. That achieves strategic objectives in the, the bread and butter aspects of our budget. Infrastructure and public safety, the, the heavy hitters all feature well in here. But um, yeah, I think Heather can go into more details. Our millage rate will be reduced by point seven mils. For the fifth straight year, okay, I was like, is, how do you, Will's like five. So I'm really proud, I'm really proud of this budget. I know that not every organization, taxing jurisdiction, whether it be a school district or a city, maybe even one in like Ingham County that has the word east in it, aren't as fortunate as we are. We've managed our return to normal, the normal economy very well. You know, just last night, I mean, I alluded to it, I'll just say it, just last night, the City of Lansing had a budget workshop much the same way we are, but they were looking to, for ways to cut three million dollars from their budget. Our staff is a very proactive based mindset. They're always looking to the future, making sure we mitigate issues. And I think that's why we can do something that a lot of other people can't, which is kind of manage that return to a normal economy, position ourselves for whatever's next, because I don't think anybody has a crystal ball to know what's gonna happen next, but there's, I, there's possible headwinds coming our way. But without any further ado, I'll turn it over to Heather, who will talk about all the great things, and then we'll start calling up department heads. And just so you know, City Council, when department heads are done, I'm allowing them to leave. So, just so you know, so get, get your questions in. Veto. So, thank you, Heather.
Thank you, Jonathan. Good evening, Councilmembers. First up, I was gonna talk about the city tax base and our ten-year trends. Julian's gonna bring that up on the screen here for us. And as you can see, over the last ten years, our real and personal values have increased. And this year, the inflation cap for Michigan was three point one percent, and the city experienced an increase of six point two percent in the twenty twenty-six taxable value when compared to twenty twenty-five. An additional increase above the inflation cap is due to the uncapping of properties when they are sold. Next up, we're gonna look at a little more detail in the millage rates. Excuse me, it's allergy season. As Jonathan mentioned, we have a point seven mil reduction this year. The general operating and the public improvements millages decreased slightly due to the Headley Act. And then the city hall debt and the Act three forty-five pension plan also do decrease due to the service requirements in the upcoming fiscal year lowering. And as we look at the ten-year trends, as Will mentioned, since twenty twenty-one, the total mills have decreased two point one three five. So going in the right direction. Next, we're gonna look at income taxes, I wanted to talk about that for just a minute. There they are in that second line. And as you can see, they've been pretty flat since twenty twenty-three, and we're expecting that trend to continue through twenty twenty-six. Recently, the Treasurer's Office implemented a plan to collect on delinquent income taxes that is not included in the budget for next year. And in the past, this practice has brought in about four hundred and twenty-five thousand a year. So hopefully, that number will be coming up. And then if we go to the bottom of that, Julian, we can look at the fund balance, where you can see that this year, there it is, we're projected to land at forty-three point six percent of the projected expenditures, and then as Jonathan mentioned, we'll be spot on at thirty percent at the end of twenty-six, which meets our fund balance requirement that City Council approved of fifteen to thirty percent. Next up is debt service. And I just wanted to point out a few of our debt service requirements. In Fund three eighty-five, the twenty sixteen capital improvement bonds will be retiring in October of twenty twenty-five. And then in June of twenty-six, the DDA TIF bonds will be retiring. And in May of twenty-seven, the City Hall refunding debt service bonds will be retiring, which will result in another reduction in the millage. Next up, capital projects. A few of the larger projects this year, whoops, I guess I'll wait for Julian to get there. All the way to the bottom. There we go. The larger projects include the Boo Center, six hundred thousand for a rec center addition. At the King Center, one hundred and fifty-five thousand for engineering, design, and boring work. And then the King Center Community Playground for seven hundred thousand with a six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar donation from the Sparks Foundation. Next, we'll look at the motor pool. And this year, we started something new, where we are allocating two hundred thousand from the fire suppression budget and reserving that each year to save up for future purchases of fire apparatus. So when they need to replace those, we have the funds in place. Next is the finance budget. There's really no changes in the finance budget, we had a slight decrease. I will look at MIS. MIS is proposing, they have a large increase in contractual services, and it's due to two projects. The first is the BSNA implementation to the cloud platform, which was approved by City Council a couple of months ago. And then the second is the migration to the Exchange email system and Microsoft Cloud. And that will be about forty-eight thousand. And then in capital outlay, they have twenty-four thousand dollars proposed for groundwork and installation of security cameras in multiple city parking lots. In the purchasing department, the proposed expenditures will be decreasing next year, and this is due to the one-time recognition in the current fiscal year of some software that we purchased. As a final note, the City Manager has proposed a balanced, well-structured budget that demonstrates responsible financial management. I am confident in the city's current financial position, and as long as we continue to manage our resources mindfully amid the ongoing uncertainty at the federal level, I feel that we will remain well-prepared to face the future challenges that might be coming our way.
I did write that.
Any questions?
Any questions for Heather on those various budgets or the highlights?
Yeah, just that one, you talking about the, he said something, DDA tip. That's the, you said a structure?
Parking structures, yeah.
So what that mean, it's, it's not paid off, is it?
Not all of them, not all of it, but part of it will.
Okay.
I have a rhetorical question, because I know the answer to it, but I didn't wanna say something. Do you know the last time that we had property values, real property values estimated to be about six hundred and sixty-five million dollars? Like we do this here?
I do not, off the top of my head.
It was two thousand and seven. So I just wanna say congratulations to us for getting back to where we were pre-housing market crash. But also, we need to recognize that inflation is real, everything costs about seventy-five percent more, and we're making the same in revenue that we did twenty years ago. So I know Councilmember One mentions a lot how we have half the population with the same amount of infrastructure, but we're getting it from both ends, and I think kudos to you guys for creating a balanced budget and one that we can face those headwinds, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Okay, thank you, Heather. Next up, we have Jason Yocum and the Assessing Office.
Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, good evening. I'm here to present to you a very small budget for my office. Not much has changed from the previous year, but I'll just go over the, the expenses, ninety-plus percent of which is just employees, some of which includes the contract that Council just passed. Last Council meeting, thank you for that. The remainder is materials and supplies, capital outlay basically covers our computers. I do bring to the Council's attention that we currently drive a two thousand and nine Ford Taurus. It's got about fifty thousand miles on it, but it's probably going to be completely rusted out over the next couple of years. We've been fortunate enough to be able to pick these up before they get auctioned off, so we'll continue to try and make those things happen on our end. But if, you know, if we did have a large purchase, it would be for a vehicle. Otherwise, very little has changed from the prior year, other than, you know, cost of living. And Clarice said, I think, it's built into the budget at this point. Questions or concerns for me?
Is it fifty thousand miles on it?
About fifty thousand, yeah.
It's the way it works here in the city, they get older with not a lot of miles on them. But it's, program isn't the best, I mean, they would like to outfit a little bit nicer vehicles, but having some hand-me-downs every now and again has helped Jason's budget out. And so long as we make him, we make it so he's riding in something respectable, I think we'll be okay.
Those are fifty thousand Jackson's CD three.
That's, that's right, that's right.
One can only hope. Thank you, Jason, thank you. Next up, we're gonna have Chris Simpson for the Police Department.
Hey, bro, my reading glasses.
Oh, good thing we don't have the policy in place yet.
Have what?
You missed the last meeting, we're, we're implementing a policy for when people who come, come speak to the public, that they
Oh, yes.
hand things to one point of contact.
Well, certainly, good evening, Council, Mister Vice Mayor, Madam Clerk. What you have in front of you is our physical twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget proposal. I'm going over probably one, two, three, four, five different areas, as you can see, that is italicized or, or bullet pointed. First one, we're looking at a total increase of a little over four percent for our approved budget. A lot of that comes out of the personnel cost. Personnel costs are up a little over six percent from twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. Obviously, there is union agreements that push that. Our personnel costs equate to approximately eighty-six percent of our overall budget. So we've got little room for anything else, a lot of it is just personnel. That's an increase of point zero zero eight from twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. More than three point two million goes towards Act three forty-five pension costs for sworn police officers. Now, there's an increase of twenty-two point eight four for health insurance costs, and that will take care of our personnel. Moving to the next section of materials and supplies, now this area is more or less just status quo, some very small increases or staying the same. Small decrease when compared to our last fiscal year. Contractual and other, contractual services include a lifeways clinician, social worker as part of the GVI program is reimbursed by ARPA funds, so we have two personnel that are reimbursed by ARPA funds. Residency allowance is expected to increase based on the number of employees who currently live in the city. Our retention incentives paid to P O L C. Members include four officers who have reached their five-year anniversary with the department, so they will receive retention incentive, approximately three thousand dollars apiece. Raven gunshot detection is a big part of the increase at twenty-five thousand per year, we're ending that second year. For the first year, it took some, some adjustments to that whole system as firecrackers, fireworks, and things like that were setting off that detection system. We do have it fine-tuned in certain locations without, throughout the city, and it, it appears to be working real well. We certainly wanna give it another year. I can honestly say that, looking at the, the data and the stats with that Raven detection system, it is usually followed by a nine-one-one call, so our citizens are calling nine-one-one, which is very helpful. Exxon body worn cameras and in-car camera systems make up more than a hundred thousand of the software budget from a contract that we do have with Exxon. Capital outlay, building additions, looking at a, finishing a basement for employee wellness area, continued updates to offices, carpets, flooring, et cetera. Looking to replace that main lobby door, if you've been in the City Police Department, you understand what that door troubles are. Rebuild the men's restroom in the basement. That room has not been restorated as long as I've been working at the City Police Department since ninety-one. So there's certainly some old things that are going on in that basement that we need to get restored. Repair the sewer system, outdoor range that went bad on us this year, or last year, shall I say. Office furniture, looking to replace some tables, chairs in our detail area where the officers convene every, before every shift. Replace desks for patrol sergeant, lieutenant, and report room, and update patrol supervisor's office, which, which heavily needs an update. Our vehicles. In a final vehicle lease from Enterprise, it's one of our Detective Bureau vehicles, that vehicle will, will come off. We're looking to purchase three patrol vehicles, approximately forty-nine thousand dollars apiece. Grand total of a hundred and forty-seven thousand total. On the table is still the purchase of an SRT vehicle, potentially to be paid partially by Jackson County Sheriff's Office, Blackman Township, and the City Police, or the City Government. We're still in the works of trying to figure out how that is going to happen, as everything is not as, gone as planned as, as we had hoped for. And we're also buying four MDCs in car computers for patrol vehicles. I entertain any questions? Vice Mayor.
So, uh, just a question about the, um, in idea, how many residents, residents you have in the city?
How many police officers or employees? Can you hear the book twirling?
Yeah, she's like the, for me.
Right now, we have three officers, two main employees, and two non-unions.
Okay.
At least one of those is in Ward Four, so.
And one going for the hundred homes as well.
Is the residency, residency allowance, is that just for the, just for officers or for anybody in the?
City employees.
Oh, all city employees?
Well, it's varying levels, so non-union employees have provisions that are in the personnel policy, and then the two unions at the Police Department negotiated, I don't think, I think they both know. So the lower unit, the Patrol Officers Union, negotiated a residency stipend in their contract. The upper unit, which is the Sergeant and Lieutenant, don't have that provision in their labor contract.
MAPE does.
But MAPE does too, yeah.
Are we at the beginning of or at the end of our respective contracts? I feel like you just wrapped up.
Yes. We are at the beginning and at the end of some of them. So we will be, we've, beginning negotiations with the MAPE unit, so general employees, next week. Their contract expires on June thirtieth. I think the other ones, we have some, we have a couple of years, I think, on the other ones, I'd have to double check.
How many openings do we currently have for officers?
Currently, we have six openings. Three are in the Police Academy right now. Two are slated to go in August, and one is going through an arbitration, more or less. Well, finished an arbitration, but contesting the arbitration decision. So we still have to hold that position.
Okay.
So if I were to get asked by a member of the public, how many patrol officers we currently have? The answer is thirty, thirty-two?
Well, total, we have fifty-one sworn. And that includes supervisors, detectives, and command, so fifty-one sworn.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
How much longer is the lifeways and the GVI program reimbursed by ARPA?
I think the GVI comes off next year, December, is when that comes off. Yes, December thirty-first, I believe.
Okay, so what happens to that?
So we're good through this entire fiscal year?
We're, we're good through this, then we have a discussion. Do we continue, do we continue that, do we do something else?
Okay.
So, you know, I'd just like to say that I know I have this conversation all the time with the City Manager and everybody else, and I just truly believe somewhere down the road, we just really need to sit down and somehow, and look at a new building for our officers, for our fighters, because I just think, if you've been there, you know what I mean, you've been to the basement, Lord knows, you know what I mean. I know they do their best with what they have, but I just think it's, sometime we really look at if it's a millage or bump, whatever, just really try to, because I know that the stress level they at, and just, just the idea of coming to a better location, maybe some kind of stress fee, free, and just have an opportunity. So I really do believe, we just really look at this, sit down and talk about it, and, and just, you know, bring it to the people, see what they say. Everybody said they love the police. So we wanna see if they really love the police with their pockets, so we just, I just think it'd be a great idea to really, um, get, I know we serious, get more serious about it.
Thank you, City Manager.
There's a, a reserve for the firefighter apparatus, is there a reserve for anything with the Police Department? You know, is any?
For vehicles, you mean?
Any big purchases?
Those, the, the largest expenses for vehicles would be the tactical vehicle for SRT. So we don't, we've never thought to do something like that on the police side. On the fire side, where the cost of everything has doubled in the last couple of years, Tim came up with a plan, and, and Heather bought in, and it's a smart thing to do for those vehicles. But we, they, the, the budgeted vehicles for patrol, the budgets, budgeting for patrol vehicles is pretty easy, or at around fifty thousand dollars a pop, we can manage what we're doing right now.
Okay, that's what I figured, just wondering.
We have that in the decent cycle where we're offloading our older ones to other communities and selling them? Or is it like we're taking them out of these sorts of like?
Well, I'll, I'll let Chris answer this, because he could, he's new chief, he can do what he wants, but before, things were, things were on a plan.
Yes, please, I know they're auctioned off, but.
We actually auctioned off there, there's like, it's very similar to eBay called Bug Field. And we posted on there, like, it says it runs very similar to eBay, and the thing I like is the buyer can go to the the buyer has to pick up the item, or pay to have a trailer from the ticket, or whatever. So all the cost to get the vehicle is on the buyer. All I have to do is, you know, we have to take pictures and post it, and then.
Can the general public buy off that, or is that strictly for other communities buying a police interceptor?
No, the public can.
You've seen, yeah, they're all stripped down.
Like a light bar, like, no, okay.
No light bar, Mister Councilor, no thank you.
All right, what about our uniform?
We can buy your light bar.
Anything else, guys? Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next up, we're gonna have Tim Gonzalez from the Fire Department, followed by John Willis. Handouts, so many handouts.
It ain't not about mushrooms.
Not about mushrooms.
They're definitely not, they're about pot.
All right, well, good evening, Council. Tonight, you have before you the review of the twenty twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six Fire Department budget. As we review the proposed budget for the Fire Department for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, it's important to highlight both the progress we've made and the challenges ahead. This year's proposed budget reflects a ten point seven seven percent increase from twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. This increase is primarily driven by the full expenditure of the SAFER grant funds, which previously supported the positions for firefighting and staffing costs. As a result, these personal expenses are now translated to a general fund to maintain the operational capability. In addition to maintaining the current staffing levels, we're also adding one firefighter position to support sustainability and meet the growing needs and demands. With calls for service projected to exceed six thousand calls this year, our ability to staff the stations around the clock remains essential in protecting lives and property. This budget proposes to ensure that we continue to level high-quality emergency response while preparing for the future demands of the fire service. As you look down to the personnel costs for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Fire Department budget, it's clear that our greatest investment continues to be people. Personnel costs have increased by fourteen point nine percent, reflecting the addition of one new firefighter and the full retention of seven firefighters who were previously funded under the SAFER grant. Personnel now accounts for eighty point nine six percent of the overall budget, up from seventy-seven point zero six from last year, an increase of about five percent, highlighting our investment in staffing capabilities and service reliability. We also remain committed to meeting the long-term obligations, so as you can see, Act three forty-five contributions to the pension are going to be at two point one million, reflecting our commitment to fulfilling the retirement obligations. Healthcare costs have risen, again, due to the headcount that we have proposed, and to cover the safer positions that are now under the general fund. Moving on to materials and supplies, this year's budget reflects both strategic investments and cost-saving successes. One notable highlight you will see is a decrease in the protective clothing expenses. This was made possible by the successful completion of a turnout gear grant, effectively removing significant costs from the general fund, allowing us to redirect these resources where they're most impactful. You will see an increase in the uniform budget, which is to ensure all personnel are properly and professionally equipped. Uh, you will see an increase in the uniform budget, uh, which is to ensure all personnel are properly and professionally equipped. Uh, we have also expanded our community risk reduction, uh, adding funding to support public education and outreach, core components of the fire service. Uh, these efforts resulted, have resulted last year in the installation of two hundred and sixty-three smoke alarms, seventy-five car seats installed, two hundred and eighty, two hundred and eight inspections conducted, and over ninety hours of public education delivered last year. Uh, we've also continued to develop our business inspection program, uh, with Inspector Whitehead. Moving on to contractual and other services, uh, this reflects our continued commitment to developing highly-trained, mission-ready fire service team, especially given that seventy percent of our team has less than five years of service, which is reflective in the increase in education and training that you will see. Uh, you will notice, uh, notable reduction in medical services. Uh, this was also due to the successful, uh, grant that we received for a one-time healthcare and cancer screening for all of our firefighters. Uh, to stay competitive in the job market, you will see some contractual updates allowing for IFF members to have additional training benefits and also increase their subsistence allowance. Uh, some of our notable trainings are the basic trainings to get our firefighters up to the standards needed, but also advancement in advanced training, uh, like urban search and rescue, leadership and development, hazmat, uh, and the extreme ownership principles, ensuring that our personnel are mission-ready and growth-focused. Uh, again, recruitment and retention, uh, are a focus, uh, as we can try to be competitive in the job market. So, you will see travel, uh, that goes along with, uh, the education to also increase with that. Moving on to our capital outlays, uh, this year's investments are designed to improve the operational readiness and enhance firefighter safety and long-term sustainability. Uh, noted at Station One, uh, we look to replace the heat, the radiant heat, uh, which currently, uh, the heat is a, is, uh, from the nineteen sixties, so it's, um, unreliable at best. We're also looking to add or to install a generator, backup generator for power at Station Two. Currently, Station Two does not have any sort of backup power, uh, and we have noted that through some of our SWAT analysis with, um, the issues at, uh, keeping Station Two operational. Our vehicle replacement, uh, we are looking to replace, uh, a, one support vehicle. Currently, the department has five support vehicles, three of which have notable issues with them, um, that have seen the, the end of their life coming to, to a close. So, we're trying to be proactive in replacement of that. Uh, also talked about at the beginning of this meeting, um, was a proactive measure that we are taking to prepare for fu, future fire truck purchases, uh, spreading the time, the cost over time, uh, instead of relying solely on the emergency appropriation. I know we asked you last year for a seven hundred thousand dollar fire truck, which we greatly needed and appreciate. Uh, if you look at the numbers this year, that same fire truck is, uh, over a million dollars. And so, uh, that's why we needed to take a proactive approach and proactive step on making sure that we have reliable equipment. Uh, also, too, uh, we are looking to broaden our public safety mission. Uh, we're asking to utilize some of the opioid settlement funds to purchase AEDs for all city buildings, also offering, um, CPR training for employees and the public. Um, finally, you will see that we're looking to upgrade our paging system, which is a relic from the nineteen sixties that we've had, hodgepodge together. Uh, this will allow us to have, uh, faster, more reliable response notifications. Any questions?
I, I have one, actually.
Yeah.
As broadly, well, specifically as broadly as you can remember, because I'm gonna ask you about some numbers. Can you inform the group about the calls for service at the fire department over the last few years?
Yes, so, over the last few years, our calls for services have increased. Last year was a double-digit increase, uh, we saw over a ten percent increase in calls for service. So, we ended up with, uh, a little over six thousand calls for service and, uh, around a hundred and ten structure fires. Uh, we're also seeing that we're being called on to farther reach than our own community. So, we're being called into other municipalities, especially during the daytime. Uh, that's when these volunteer departments or smaller departments don't have the appropriate staff in order to, uh, handle the emergency.
Seems to me, and my memory isn't for any, for anything, but it seems to me a hundred and ten structure fires is about double, that it used to be not, in the, in the not-too-distant past.
Again, that, that does take in count, can, account for us going out mutual aid as well. Uh, but we hover right around that same number from year to year. Again, ebbs and flows of, of the, but that's, that's typical for that.
So, kinda, in that same vein, um, when we do mutual aid, we go out to another community. I'm not suggesting we don't do that, because we need to, if they can't help people. Um, are we reimbursed on any way, or do we just go do it?
No, it's a, it's a regional agreement that we have with the state.
Yeah.
But also, too, uh, it's, it's also to, to remember that not too long ago, we relied heavily on, uh, that mutual aid agreement, and it, and it was something that, uh, the city of Jackson benefited from immensely.
Sure, I, it goes in both directions, okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, no, I just got a question. Oh, go on, wait, what you gonna mean? So, um, I'd just like to say, you know, what you was talking about the mutual aid. I know, uh, the SAFER grant, we used to do that, I don't think we've done that in a while, have we?
Our SAFER grant funds just exhausted in February of last year.
Okay, because I, I remember, and that's the main thing, SAFER grants. And I know in the past, on the past leadership, you know, it was like, how can I say this? F the fire department, basically, and, uh, you know, uh, and, and I just appreciate leadership, new leadership that we have, the support that's, is given, uh, having people, because I remember, and that was like, we were way on the staff in fire department. And I mean, every time we call, we had to have someone that's coming to help us, because we were just on the staff so bad. But I appreciate, uh, you know, just the support that given to the fire department for personnel and, and, you know, with the budget and, and, uh, and just, um, I know the SAFER grant expired, I don't know if it's coming back or not, but I just think, uh, thank you, and thank city manager and all the other staff just supporting the fire department, what you've been doing, and, uh, it's been like, it was real tough for a long, long time, uh, but, um, seem like we doing good, open up another, uh, other fi, a fire station, and just happy for that. I do have another question, but I'm gonna wait to, in the morning. Thank you very much.
Can you read those stats again that you gave under the materials and supplies for the? What was the?
Can you be specific, I guess?
The, um, fire, smoke alarms.
Oh, yeah.
Passed out those.
Uh, see, yeah, so year-to-date, uh, two hundred and sixty-three smoke alarms have been installed in the city. Uh, we've done seventy-five car seat distributions, two hundred and eight business inspections, and over ninety hours of, uh, public education that was delivered.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
As John's coming up, the only thing I'd say, you can keep coming up, John, is I don't know how we would deal with our increased calls of service if we were still operating, um, with the staffing levels we had previously. Like, this is, the call levels are a little insane, a little insane out there right now. And I think they're just gonna continue to, to increase.
Uh, good evening, everyone, Madam Clerk, Vice Mayor Dancy, City Councilmember, staff. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to come and talk to you a little bit about our budget. Uh, we don't have any significant increases or any changes, but we did wanna go over some things, so you'll see and you'll better understand what it is we're looking to do. If you notice in our twenty-four, twenty-five projected budget, there's an increase under expenditures. And what an in, increase is including is some of our, the audit that we've had prepared in the past to come to complete that. We have completed Phase One, working through that, that will be, will be presented to the council in June. So, we're looking to present that to you in June, so we can get started immediately with Phase Two, which would be a citywide. Remember, Phase One was just a Jackson Police Department, where we had a couple of community forums, and some conversations with officers, conversation with administrative staff, conversation with the public, that we'll present to you, that will give you an equity audit of what that looks like for the city of Jackson. We're looking to, to do the same thing with the complete citywide audit of all of our services. One of our primary goals is always to, uh, improve our policies, our practices, and our community engagement, and strengthen our governmental relationships. So, we think that would go a long way for that. That is the difference in what you see from the original twenty-four, twenty-five to the twenty, I'm sorry, original twenty-four, twenty-five budget to the projected budget. From twenty-four, twenty-five to twenty-five, twenty-six, we don't have any major increases. There is an increase, if you'll notice, on under contractual services. And what we're looking to do is just increase some of the contractual services that we already provide. For example, right now, for the first time in the history of our youth council, we have a full youth council. And they're, they're being very active, they wanna hold a, a Jackson City Youth Summit, and do some things. So, we're looking to increase our staffing there, and we're looking to increase our staffing for events. While events are, are, they're visible outcomes of our work, our primary function is to create meaningful improvements, ensure that fair access to all city services and programs are available to everyone in our community. So, that's what we're looking to, increase those services and that access, so we can continue the work that we do with our coordinated groups, which is MLK C I A, which, as you may already know, has given out over one million dollars in small business grants to the community. Twenty-four grants have been awarded of up to forty-nine thousand dollars. Twenty-one of those twenty-four are in full compliance and working really, really well. So, it's the only reason we doing that. But the MLK C I A, Racial Equity Commission was, which is working with us on the audit, the youth council, and of course, our diversity action team here at the city. That's our only changes requested.
Thanks, John, any questions?
Okay.
I see in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget versus projected, it looks like the projected is about seventy-five of overall, like, what it was.
Yes. That's the exact payment to the, uh, first racial equity, the first fa, Phase One of the racial equity audit, and the difference is there, so.
Uh, no, I just wanna say I appreciate the work that you do up there and out in the community. I know this has been a difficult time.
Yes, it's, uh, it, it is been, but we enjoy what we do. We enjoy the support that we receive from, from all our, our city staff and our city workers, they make it a lot better. And their members of the community as well, so we look forward to it.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, if you have further questions.
All right, thanks, John.
Thank you.
Uh, now, we have, we're gonna get, we're gonna get big, we're gonna do, uh, we're gonna do Troy, in engineering, so. Strap in, I, I.
I'm just glad I get to go before Corbin.
I warmed you up, I warmed you up with police and fire. Sorry, buddy.
How are you guys doing tonight? So, um, before I get into my lines and my numbers, I guess I give you a quick, um, reminder of what engineering does. Like, you guys know that we do capital improvements, uh, infrastructure improvements, street sewer, water mains, um, you know, basically all the big improvements outside of the plants. But on top of that, we also do manage the streetlight system. We, uh, manage the traffic services, meaning traffic signals, signs, and we have everyone's favorite, which is parking. So, um, that's primarily what we do. When we talk about, um, the work we do on our infrastructure, sewer, streets, water, that's, uh, work that, uh, we share the funds and the accounts with Mike and DPW. We, we work together, we coordinate, and we have to, um, make sure our bal, our budgets work together to, uh, to balance. So, um, that's what we work on. To, to work on these categories or these, this type of stuff we do, we, um, we work in, uh, what do we got? I got eight different funds, and within those funds, there's like eleven different lines that touch on everything we do. Um, the first one, our one oh one fund, one oh one four fifty, that's our streetlights. And that one's a pretty easy one, because basically the cost is more or less the electricity to run our streetlights. And then we do have some personnel costs in there to, um, to repair on the city street, city-owned streetlights. Most of the streetlights out there are owned and operated and maintained by consumers, although there are some of them that are, um, owned and maintained by the city, city staff. And, uh, our electrician, who also works on our traffic signals, um, works on maintaining those when, when one get, the biggest, probably the biggest thing he's gotta do is deal with the decorative lights that get hit. And you'd be surprised how often it happens, so, um, that's, uh, an easy line for us, the street lighting, and that stays pretty consistent every year to year. Really, the biggest change of that is, uh, like, our energy costs from consumers. Moving down, um, to something, go ahead.
Um, just before we get too far ahead of it, so, traffic lights are included in this line item, is what you're calling it?
Traffic signals are not.
Okay, traffic signals are not.
There you go. So, lights, make it so that we can, uh, see, traffic signals tell us when to drive. So, traffic signals will come up, um, a little later in our, uh. Uh, you wanna just do it now, because I'm go, I'm on major streets.
So, I vaguely remember us making you go out for bid for a position that we probably didn't have to do when you were just gonna pick the same guy anyway, what's your name of that, do you remember?
Well, we did use, we did use the same guy. We, we've had the same contract with Jay Rank for six years, and we, we did that, um, again. I know, I know it made you uncomfortable not going out for proposals, and we can go out for proposals next time, but, um, basically, it's been consistent, they're a company that does this for a lot of cities, it just made a lot of sense. Yeah. We did not go out to, we did not go out to, you, you asked us to, and then it came back the next council meeting and said, you know, we don't need to go through that exercise, this is where we're gonna land anywhere, so we landed on that, okay?
Sorry, I'm sorry for that. That was all my fault.
Yes, it was. Thanks, Connor, for giving me two weeks of work for.
I got a question.
Yeah.
So, with the street lights, uh, how does that work? Does, uh, the people call in, or, uh, that's how they get replaced or whatever?
You mean when, when there's a street light that's not functioning?
Yeah.
Um, most of them are consumers, um, they, people can go online and, uh, put it in the consumer's website that it's not working. But really, what happens is they call our office, and we put him, we go in in the same place they could, and we put him in, so. Um, we just hope people be able to take care of it. The biggest problem we have with, uh, that is usually takes consumers a month or two to get to it. It's just their system, so, but we, we really lower the bar of expectations when people call us, and, uh, eventually it gets done. Is that the answer you're looking for? So, moving down past street lighting, we, we work on, uh, major streets. Um, there's three components to this. There's the street and bridge construction on major streets, um, and this one is variable based on how many, um, based on the, the funding that we get in terms of grants and, uh, matches and things like that. In the coming year, we're gonna spend three point one million dollars on major streets. The, probably the biggest, biggest highlights of that is, uh, about point six million on, uh, the MLK Trail, up there by, uh, from Weatherwax's shelter, and then another half a million dollars on the MLK corridor, Street Job. And then, there's a lot of other, there's a number of other projects out there. The total number of projects that we're gonna be working on, um, in the next two years is, we're gonna be at thirty-six places, working on different, thirty-six different projects. This year, in twenty twenty-five alone, we're gonna be digging holes at about thirty locations. So, some of those projects will span into next year, but, um, this is, uh, we're, we're big this year. And part of that's a reflection of big grants that we've gotten, whether it's the MLK corridor raise grant, um, it's some of the, uh, what's that? Washington? Well, see, we haven't even, we haven't even started to spend that money yet, but it's coming, right? So, we did get a grant for that, but that's really gonna start, that's gonna start hitting our budgets in twenty-six and twenty-seven. Right now, we're, we're looking at, um, getting some engineering going on that, but, um, that's kind of a slow start in terms of the spending, even though it's a big part of moving the project along. But I was saying, we're gonna be at, uh, thirty-six different spots digging holes in the next two years, so it's, it's a lot going on.
I see Morel on there, from around the bowline.
Correct.
Is that, what does that say?
Well, that is programmed for construction, I don't remember if it's in twenty-seven or twenty-eight. It's programmed, we got, we got, uh, some federal grant money to reconstruct it. Basically, take out the pavement, full depth of the pavement, rebuild new aggregate base and, uh, new asphalt surface. And, um, but what, when we have it in the budget now, is we're starting to ramp up on the engineering, meaning survey and borings and things like that, getting ready to do it. So, um, I don't have my glasses on, but it looks like it's about fifty thousand dollars. That's really not very much money, even though fifty thousand dollars is a lot of money, but in terms of a project like this, it won't be. So, that's just enough to get us started, to get engineering started on the preliminaries.
Councilmember Davis, it was, uh, before you were, um, on council, we amended our transportation improvement plan, something we have to do annually. Um, every three years. Every three years, and we included, um, Morel on that in its different phases. So, it's, it is on our plan to get to, and that's the first cycle, as Troy said, is, is planned for then. But, yeah, Morel is a big bogey out there, so we just got a grant for Washington, that was one of our big bogeys, and Morel is our other one, and our plan is, it's on our transportation, uh, our, our tip, our transportation improvement. And our plan is, it's on our transportation, our, our tip, our transportation improvement, improvement plan, and we're gonna keep working at it.
Yeah, that's the main.
Yep. So. So we're gonna get all the pavement replaced on, on, uh, Morel from Brown to West, and all the traffic signals replaced over the next four years, but it's also gonna be done over four separate grants and different projects. But, um, we really, we couldn't get a, a big chunk of money to do it all at once, but we were able to get grant here, grant there, and piece it together to get it done over a, a short period of time. Okay.
The last time we did that was twenty, twenty-five years ago. It wasn't that long ago. I just remember I got a lot of cash.
It was, um. You mean that, that section of Morel?
Yeah.
It was done, I've been with the city for twenty years, so it was like probably eighteen years ago, and that was when, um, it was some of the, uh, I forget the name of the funds, but it was when we were going through the, uh, Great Recession and some of the stimulus money. And, but the project that was done then was just a, uh, a surface treatment. So, that service treatment was supposed to last ten years, but here we are eighteen years later, and you know what we got, so. We're gonna, we're gonna do full depth this time and get a, a longer life and getting something that's more maintainable under there. Yes. We gotta do the water main. We gotta do the, uh, lead services. But, um, that shows up in another line in our budget here, that we, as we work our way down through the water, through the water fund. But yes, we know that we don't, we don't wanna build a new road over an old water main with lead services, so.
Do you just do the lead services on that part of the road, or do you kinda go off into the arteries, like a couple houses, maybe just one house?
Depends on whose house. Um, so we've talked about construction. It's gonna be a big deal, um, three point one million. And that, uh, major street, the two oh two, four seventy-four, that's traffic services. That's where we're talking about traffic signals, maintenance and operation, and that's where we're talking about signs, sign shop. We manage the, uh, the, the budget for, um, all traffic services. But, um, the DPW guys, they, they perform the work in the field for the signing. And we manage like the inventory and the, uh, the work assignment. So, it's basically a, a joint effort. It just happens to show up on our budget, but, uh, that's something that we do together. And then the traffic services in terms of traffic signals, that's something that we maintain, and we, um, administer that contract with J Rank to, uh, keep these traffic signals operating. And then lastly, in our major street fund, the two oh two, five oh five, that is state highway construction. And that just accounts for construction on state highways only. It's a big, big chunk in twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, fifteen point seven million. But that's, those are projects that are administered by MDOT. We cooperate with. Uh, we pay a small portion of, but we got eight point three million dollars going into that bridge down on Cooper Street by the railroad station. Another four point five million going in on the, um, MLK Corridor. So that's a big line, but when you see that fifteen point seven million, know that we, we are not paying most of that. It's mostly, uh, our state and federal grant monies that's, uh, that's running that one. Moving down, we talked about major streets. We also do local streets. That's something that's not nearly as well-funded, and we all know that the condition of the local streets is where our, um, our real problems are. We've got bridge and street construction. We don't have a whole lot in there. We got five, about a half a million dollars. That doesn't go very far. It gets us some patching. It gets us some maintenance. Um, a big part, a big chunk of that is going to be, of that five hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and twenty thousand, that is gonna be for CDBG grant work to install decorative, low-level decorative lighting in the Health District. And that's a project that's to be being done in cooperation with, um, Quarry and, uh, Community Development down there. Um, and lastly, we also do the traffic services for local streets. On local streets, we do not have traffic signals. All we have are signs, so those costs are minimal. But, uh, you know, when a smoke, when a stop sign gets hit or something, it's gotta be replaced. And then there's other signing things, but that's mostly signs. And again, that's one of those that we work at cooperatively with, uh, the DPW. We pretty much are seamless when we work on that together, but we manage that, uh, budget line in the budget. Moving down, for water funds, we, um, we do the capital improvements for the, uh, distribution system, the four oh two, four fifty-eight. We're looking at spending fifteen point seven million next year. That's big. It's bigger than we've done in the past. Like, our projected is four million. Next year's gonna be fifteen point seven million. And again, that's gonna fluctuate based on grants and the type of work and the, uh, the funding that's available. Next year, we're gonna be spending two point four million down on the MLK Corridor. And we're gonna be spending about eleven million on transmission main work. But a lot of that is gonna be grant-funded money. Those are the two highlights, but if you look at the list that, um, she's scrolling through, that's line after line after line. There's a lot going on in the water right now. We've been successful in terms of landing grants for the transmission mains. We've got, uh, DWSRF funds for replacing four-inch water mains. We've got, we're using a lot of that money to do, um, lead service lines. So, that's what's covered in the budget for the water funds. The sanitary sewer funds, the four oh five, four fifty-seven. Again, that's, that fluctuates based on the, what's being done on any given year and the funds that are available. Next year, we're looking at spending five point nine million, and you're gonna kinda see a theme here. We're putting one point seven million of that into the MLK Corridor. That MLK Corridor, it's long, and it's big, and it's important, and it's a, it's a, you know, a milestone project for the city. So we're making big investments in terms of the street, making big investments for water main, big investments for sewer. So, um, one point seven of that will be going to the MLK Corridor. We're putting one point one million, um, into the rehab of the Monkey Run Interceptor Sewer that, um, crisscrosses the west side of town. That's the old brick sewer, about four to six-foot diameter, it changes. It was built in nineteen oh seven, and it's still brick. It runs right past my house, actually. But, um, we had it analyzed, you, we had a contractor look at it last year in terms of, uh, reviewing its condition, 'cause it hadn't been looked at. I was kinda expecting the worst, but it was actually a really good report. The bricks, the bricks are holding up good. Really, what just needs to happen is some sealing and some, uh, um, grouting and things like this.
Just of, of all the stuff we have to be fine, a five-foot diameter, a hundred and nineteen-year-old brick sewer is just plenty good, but it's in location.
It was, it's in surprisingly good condition. Like, the, the bricks haven't deteriorated. But really what it needs is it needs some love in the grout, and it needs to be sealed, and some of the voids need to be filled. But, um, originally, we were, we were concerned that it would have to be replaced, and it would be millions and millions. Well, that would be nice to do, and it would give us, you know, we'd be satisfied for a couple hundred years, but I don't think it's realistic in terms of funding. So if we do this one point one million, it'll buy us decades.
Do we put somebody down in there and they do the grout from the inside?
Somebody will have to do that, yes. They'll walk through there. They'll have, they'll be doing the confined space entry with the harnesses and all this, and they'll go down there, just like tuck pointing a building, I'm guessing. Yeah. Okay. They, they, they wear boots. So we talked about sewer. Um, then the other part that we do is parking. We got two lines in there for parking, auto parking, the Parking Assessment District. The one, the auto parking, they're kind of related to each other. One contributes to the other. It's used primarily to pay the bonds from the twenty twenty-eight, or twenty eighteen construction. And then the other part of it is the, uh, the, uh, the part related to the Parking Assessment District. Those, and pretty much all our part, not pretty much, no. Yeah, the right word is pretty much, 'cause one lot is not in this district. That's over there at, um, the Y Lot, Lot Seven. But the rest of them are in there, so, um, that five eighteen, five eighty-six, that covers, um, that's funded by permit sales, assessments, and some fines. And then the money is spent on, primarily on maintenance and enforcement and administration. Um, we're looking at spending four hundred and fifty-two thousand next year. That includes the assumption that we're gonna have to assess for two hundred thousand. But I think the other thing to point out, which you probably don't love, it really doesn't include a whole lot of money for improvements in construction. It's just gonna be patching things together. If, uh, if this community determines that it needs more than that, you know, there's those discussions that have been ongoing about assessments and, and permit fees. I think, I think we just looked up, wasn't it twenty thirty? Twenty thirty-three, so we got a ways to go, nine more years. And then lastly, we have the engineering admin account, and that's the one that, uh, it's, uh, basically pays for engineering staff. It pays for our office space. It pays for our equipment. It pays for, um, um, those type of things. And, uh, you know, we operate like a, like an engineering firm. Every billable hour contributes to that fund, so. That is kind of a, a, a constant, because the way we operate up in engineering, even though we have fluctuations in construction, we have fluctuation in, in these funding and doing more projects, but we use consultants for most of the things. When I first started, we were a full-service engineering, basically consulting firm. We, we did everything ourselves. Didn't use consultants for everything. Now we use consultants for most things. I think it gives us flexibility. That means when funding goes down, we're not impacting staff and having staff that we can't afford, but at the same time, we've got consistency. And we're actually reducing our costs next year projected. The main reason for that is last year, we had two people retire, and they had to be bought out in terms of their, um, vacation and all of the costs that go with someone retiring. We're not gonna have that next year, so we're actually seeing a little bit of reduction in engineering admin.
I have one question.
Okay.
Just to go back to streetlights, not traffic signals, but.
Streetlights, okay.
Asked this before, and it's one of those situations where I'm sure it is a lot easier said than done.
Okay.
However, the fact that consumers is in charge of our streetlights, and it takes them two months to replace them, and we get dinged for that, it's just another thing on like a relatively long list of things that we get dinged for that we have no control over. Have we broached the subject of like just being in charge of it?
I don't think, that, that wouldn't work. There's too many of them. One and two, they're un-metered, and, um, you know, just in terms of the inventory. When I say it takes two months to get to them, that's also me lowering the bar of expectations, you know, like, you know, I'm an engineer, you know, I always got that safety factor in there. It really, probably doesn't take that long, and usually, you know, we just, it just doesn't get done in three days either. But, uh, I think this is the most cost-effective way to do it, 'cause the other thing it does when we request a new light or a light gets replaced, it gets paid for over a long term. We're not get, we're not getting a bill for like, oh, you did eight hundred dollars here. We're not really getting built at all, built at all. It's built into our rate. So it's, it's almost like having a, a light insurance policy more than a, a lighting fee.
And, yeah, Troy is right about the fudge factor on timelines. Another good thing about consumers, um, when they're, you report a street light out, you, if you fill everything out correctly, you will get emails when it's been done and notified. And, um, a lot like Troy, when I get those, um, those points pointed out to me, I'd say, you can, you can do it on consumers' website, but I'm gonna do it for you this time right now, and it's really slick, and it's nice to get the emails on it.
And there are a lot of options when you, when you go online, you know, you can put, whether it's flicking or just flickering, it's completely out.
And one thing that's kinda working for us right now is, um, when, when, when old streetlights aren't working great, instead of fixing them, they're pretty much replacing them with LEDs, so we're getting better lighting too.
Right?
And most, most of mine were done in under a month.
Yeah, good call. All right.
You guys all set?
Thanks, Troy.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Mike and Chandra. This is what we call the expensive part of the meeting with Troy and now Mike and Chandra. Well, this is, uh, yeah, but this is more.
Well, good evening, everyone. Um, this year, I decided to bring Chandra with me, because Chandra does a vast majority of the work on this budget, and I think it's good to let her have her time to shine. And I'm, I wanna let you know, we have a lot to cover. When my budget's, those of you, we, some of us have been through this before, but, um, I'm gonna go through some of them pretty quickly. If you, if you want me to stop, just stop, all right? Speak up at any time. So, so we will start with forestry. And I, I know, Will, this is your favorite. This one, we have, uh, we have bolstered almost every year since I've been here. And so it's been like five years, every year it goes up a little bit. There, there are exceptions. In twenty twenty-three, we had the really bad ice storm that everyone remembers, and that, uh, put us behind by about three years. So, I went to Jonathan and said, uh, hey, you know, the trees are the bane of my existence. So, so he, he did his job and found us some more money, so this year, we actually had extra two hundred thousand dollars to throw at it, to tell our guys and to tell Johnny's Tree Service, hey, let's, let's attack these trees and get as many done as we can. And, um, so next year, it is going to be increased by another six percent, because, uh, our tree problem's not getting any easier. I mean, we get calls every day, so that's, the tree problem is never-ending. So, we'll move on from that. If you don't have any questions, we'll go to sidewalk construction. And this one is pretty basic. It's increased by five point three percent because of, uh, materials, but this is city-owned sidewalk. You have any questions?
So that just deal with say if a tree root breaks it up, that's what that deal with? How does that work?
Well, um, under my leadership, we have changed the way we look at that, because I thought it was fair. If we have a tree, and I've explained, um, to our new, our new, um, DBW forum, and look, if we have a, say a silver maple, they're known for doing this. If it's outgrowing its environment, if it's pushing up the sidewalk, we'll remove the tree and, and repair the sidewalk. If that tree has done a lot of damage, we'll, we will prepare or repair part of it. We have done that. You know, if it's obvious, it's our city-owned tree that's causing the problems, right? So there's really not much to talk about on si- sidewalk construction. We'll move to drains at large. So the drain, drains at large is pretty much like, uh, most, most of that budget comes from what's called MS four. Do you guys know what that is? Okay, MS four is, uh, it's like a joint venture between us, um, and three townships, Summit, Leone, and Blackman. And what we do is we get together and make sure we're not dumping stuff in the river. So we do public, there's a public education portion. There's, uh, there's a lot to it, but we, I mean, you'll see stuff on the city website about if it, you know, if it, we have, we have to do all of this stuff. It's a whole thing. But, I mean, pretty much, we're trying to prevent the Grand River from being polluted. And if there's a sheen on the river, they call us. We go look, and we try to, you know, try to find out where it's coming from, report it to the state. It's a whole, this whole thing, so, and, and, and we do pay a, um, con- consulting engineer for a part of that.
So you guys don't just meet annually and like ask each other if you're dumping anything in the river, and say no, and just do a year later?
Actually, actually, there's a lot of requirements, yeah. More than you would think, yeah. All right, so we'll move on to weed control. And there, and there isn't really much to talk about in this one. It's based on the noxious weed ord- ordinance and its private lots. And this is one we build back to the property owners if the grass is too high, and I mean, you guys are all familiar with that. So we'll move on to ground maintenance. Oh, you have a question? Okay.
I've seen a couple of questions from people lately that they've wanted. They're trying to do like a butterfly garden kind of thing, like in part of their yard, but the city has deemed it as noxious weeds or whatever. What, just so I know for future reference, what, what's the difference? I mean, like, we have butterfly gardens downtown. Does someone just need to put like a little sign in their yard for butterfly gardens? Or what, what makes it, what makes it noxious weeds?
What makes it noxious weeds is it violates the noxious weed section of our ordinance. And when, um, we did the Nomo May, that was a deliberate effort passed by council to allow that. If it's on private property, and it's a bona fide butterfly garden and not like their whole yard, letting us know would probably be good. It, and it probably wouldn't catch anybody's attention. But if it's the whole yard, um, I'm not, not buying the butterfly garden thing.
I haven't looked at the answer.
Yeah, but the, the quick and dirty answer is that, that what, what is? Yeah, but the, the quick and dirty answer is that, what, what is a butterfly garden, what's not? Well, if it violates our noxious weeds ordinance, then it's not a butterfly garden. We don't have any alternative right now on the books. With our butterfly gardens downtown was put, put in like pollinating plants, and we're improving that now. So if someone comes to us and it's like, well, this is milkweed, this is whatever, this, this is good for monarchs, you know, that's obvious, and we wouldn't do anything about that. But, I mean, if it's dandelions and they're, you know, ten inches tall, then not buying it, doesn't pass the smell test.
Alright, so now we move on to ground maintenance. This is, this is decreased because of the, the sale of city-owned properties. And this is city mowing lots, islands, parkways, trash container pickup, and fifty percent of leave pickup comes out of this. So every fall in city lot and snow, we move on salting and all that stuff, that's pretty straightforward. Alright, well, move on to tax property maintenance. This is mowing properties we took back from the county, and that, and it has gone down a little. Let's see if she's, it's really not. And then we move on to civic affairs. And this one, there is a fifteen percent increase because we're offering more citywide cleanups. And there is, there's neighborhood, neighborhood cleanups and, and Blight Blitz is going to come out, come out of this. So it, it's like, you know, we, we really like to do this for the people, you know, we really like to have these cleanups. Actually, we're having one Saturday, but we, you know, you'd go to realize there is a cost associated with that. It's not free. One right here. Well. I don't, I don't remember off the top of my head, I'm sorry, I can get you that information.
Uh, the, not all, everything had been tallied, but around five hundred yards. At a cost of, I don't want to quote him because he's known to go high, but maybe around forty thousand, forty to sixty thousand dollars on cost, but five, five hundred cubic yards is a lot, is a lot, a lot. Like, it's a difference-making amount out there.
What do we get on the cleanup, like spring cleanup days, like where we started?
Chandra, do you remember? Yeah.
Like how many, comparatively, how many yards? I mean, I know it's measured differently.
It's still.
We don't, because we're, what happens on the pickup days is Emmens is right there, so we don't have like a good tally. But the Blight, Blight Blitz is like, we just count our roll-offs, like our twenty-yard, thirty yards, times whoever.
Yeah, well, like Jonathan was saying, like, on our cleanup days, if, we, we will have Emmens there, we'll have roll-offs that we take in, it's, it's just, it's, it's busy and it's kind of, you know, a lot going on. So. And I'm, I'm just gonna, kind of echo what Troy was saying, because we're going to get into streets now. And the, the way I look at it, it's really simple, right? We do overlap a lot, but Troy builds the streets and we maintain them. I think it's probably a really simple way to look at it. So I remind everyone that all street money is Act Fifty-One money except trunk line maintenance, which is from the state. Act Fifty-One money comes from gas tax and vehicle registration. Some construction comes from federal grants, and that would, that would be Troy's area. But, and this has been asked before, so I'll just get out ahead of it. We store four thousand five hundred tons of salt in our salt barn. And, and we order about five hundred tons at a time. And so we're like, right now it's full, because when we start again next year, well, we'll be on this year's prices because it go up every year, you see what I'm saying? So we, we, we stock up, so it's going to be more when we order next year. So what I'm going to do is, I'm going to, because, because Troy already covered some of this, I'm going to, I'm going to lump the majors and the, and the locals together. Because you have, you have pretty much, you know, you have the same thing. It's street and bridge maintenance, and then for us, that's patching, sweeping, and parkway maintenance. And then winter maintenance, obviously, is salting and plowing. And the majors and locals, they have the same, they're going, they're going up. But what we did this year, it was actually kind of funny, you know, when I first started at DPW, the way they would measure salt is they'd say, that's a five-yard truck, and I think it's almost full, so we'll say it's four and a half yards. So we didn't like that, and we didn't like that at all. So, so what we did is we got a scale for the bucket of our front-end loader. So now we know exactly how much is going out, and we're keeping better track. And, and Chandra can speak to it better than I can, but I mean, I think, well, I mean, it was, it was off. Yeah. So. And then we, then we have trunk lines, the state reimburses us for that. So that's, you know, it's usually about two hundred and thirty thousand, that's what it is this year. Okay, and, let's see, we have a six forty-one Public Works admin. And Chandra changes because everyone's going to get paid out of admin now, and it used to be paid out of water, forestry, different places. So that's, that's more accurate way to do this. But, you know, we have increases because of personal service wages and benefits and education and training. And then we'll move on to motor pool. So I want to thank Tim Gonzalez because, because of his relationships with the townships. You know, we, we've gained Blackman, Leone, Napoyne, Summit, and Michigan State Police. So, so actually, we're fixing all their fire trucks and some of their other vehicles, so we're actually getting income. And that's helping the motor pool. Okay. And now we're moving on to the big ones. We're gonna, we're going to talk about wastewater, the five ninety. I'm not going to go through all the subcategories in wastewater because Troy already talked about some of them. I'd just like to mention a few things. We, you know, when you're, when you're going to get grant money to redo a street, as Troy was talking about, it's, it's beyond stupid not to replace the water in the sewer. So these grants are great, but they end up jacking up the prices in different areas of the budget, like sewer. It's worth noting that Chandra and I have gone through this budget, and it's a bare-bones budget. Wastewater is bare bones, and we started doing that last year, and we continue on even more this year. And then we'll go on to four oh four, which is maintenance on the sewer system. Alright, it's, it's Equipment Replacement Fund. Right now we're cleaning the sixty-inch for the first time ever that runs from Myrtle to the plant. And we're about, they're about, last I heard, they're a little over halfway done. Okay, and, and then one of the things that's hurt us in this fund is we're finishing up the Myrtle lift station project and these pipe gallery project, and, and these were ARPA projects that ran over, so of course you got to pay the rest because we didn't, no one had a crystal ball and could see what prices we're going to do. So that's, and then you start, we started drawing off the fund balance in our wastewater. And then the la, the last section we have to go through is water, which is five ninety-one. It's, it's going to look a little convoluted because we have bonds for the SRF, we have the EPA grants for the Purlup, and five hundred thousand dollars for a wellfield, these are all grants. So that makes it look a little bloated. So in admin, everything is the same, water billing, everything is the same, distribution, everything is the same. And meters, is everything is the same as last year. And in the water treatment budget, the only thing that really went up were chemicals. So it's actually a lot like last year's budget. And then in the four oh two, which is the water, water Equipment Replacement Fund. We have all the ARPA money going through here, and then MLK and the Purlup money too, but, so that does look a little higher than it actually is, and we're just doing a few small projects at the waste, at the water plant. And, and that's, that's about it. I mean, we've really, really backed off on, we'll see if we get that, the SRF we're applying for. See if we get some grant money. And the very last thing that I have to go through is lead service lines, which is four oh three. And this is paid for out of the water fund, and please understand, we have to save money in this account. One point six million this year and one point eight million next year, because at some point, we're going to have to pay for our entire lead service line program out of this fund. Because we're being told by all the financial experts that the BIL money, if, if we, our best chance to get is this year, after that it'll be gone. So we're not, we're not going to have the grant money that, that we've had in the past. So we're going to have to totally fund lead service line just out of water funds in the future. And that's it for me, unless you have any questions? I know that was a lot.
Yeah, Mike always says a lot, and I know we've done some water and sewer discussions already, but still want to provide time for questions. Like in the forestry stuff from Mike, those, the guys that are killing, the contractors are doing a really good job for us. And that helps every spring and fall when it seems to storm a lot, so. Thanks, Mike.
Yep. Majors, streets.
Are we at the point in the year where we, where we're not able to cut down trees?
There are certain rules, and I'm not an arborist, but we do follow, we adhere to certain rules about there's oak wilt. So there's certain times of year you cannot cut down an oak tree because it'll spread oak wilt. And I would have to refer to our arborist from Johnny's, but.
And then there's the bat thing, but that only really applies when we're federally funded on tree trimming and stuff, so. Oak wilt being the thing we worry about right now.
Well, what kind of education and training do the guys get?
What, which guys and where? We, I have so many people.
All of them, like licenses, all that stuff going on.
Alright, so to, to work at the water plant, you've got.
I'll handle this then. So there are licenses that you need to hold to be an operator at the water plant and an operator at the wastewater plant, and then there's also licenses we need to have our people hold in the distribution and collection systems. So they all have accreditations and continuing education that they need to do after they get their license. Professor Osborne, alright, now let's party with Parks.
Alright, we're ready to party. Alright, Mr. Vice Mayor, Council, Mr. Green, I'm really, I'm a short also. I'm really excited to be here. Before I start, can't do any of this without Heather Ennis and her group. They're amazingly supportive with this new program, it's our second year into it. Any question, anything we have, they are on it quickly and helpful and finding a lot of, like, interdepartmental help and leaning on each other. I think it's great to see, under Mr. Green's leadership, that we are growing as a group. And so here we go with the why of what Parks and Recs is. Which people are always surprised when I start to explain what I do. First up, we're going to have one oh one, five six seven, which is our cemetery department. We're just going to go right down the line. Cemeteries is, much like I'm in, most of my budgets, you never know what you're going to get each year, based on what is happening. Cemeteries is based on what comes to us and what we have going on. Last year in twenty twenty-four, we had thirty-eight burials, forty-nine, or thirty-nine foundations and fifty cremations that came through our cemetery. We have had increases with staffing, the national staffing increase. We have had a, a large uptick, and I will discuss it several times, of vandalism. From, we had to bring in Johnny's Tree Service and cranes and put markers back on with glue over at Mount Evergreen. Strangely enough, we've had three to four police chases through Woodland Cemetery that have hit markers and different things like that. So things that you don't think about happening, happen, so that's what the, it happens after we leave at five o'clock. So vandalism, we have, finally, our, I think we put in our fleet information, and if Mike left, in two thousand, or twenty twenty, I think, is when we asked Enterprise, we got our fleet this year, which is shocking because we're always kind of out there thinking it's going to come, it came. And Heather, you're going to come, it's forty-seven, right, guess forty-seven? Is that what I'm saying, for fleet vehicles? So, yeah, there you go. So when we have, I'm always really bad at accounting terms, and they're awesome. So when we purchase new vehicles, it does go in there almost like a double, double the cost, just so it covers some accounting terms and moving around the money so that it's a new, a new vehicle. So you'll see that in there. Tree loss, we have had, much like anybody else, storms that have taken, we have a very historic cemetery at Mount Evergreen and at Woodland Cemetery. When those trees go down, they're a hundred footers, and we've got a lot to deal with. So sometimes you just don't know by the act of God what you're going to get. Mowing season, I could talk about mowing, I, I hope someday the federal government listens. Our seasons have changed, but our seasons have grown, so we might start mowing, we might need to mow in March. We start a contract in April, and I think we ended close to December this year. So it just keeps growing, we can't let it just grow, and, and so that season's growing. And so we're trying to, you know, get ready for that. So that's that going. Next year we have, we're looking to get a couple of different things between our Parks Department and our cemetery. If you don't know, they share space at Woodland Cemetery. We're looking for some plow carts and easy things to come downtown, get around, and do some things between burial sites so that we're not taking big trucks in between burial areas. And that is cemeteries. Any questions?
So what do you use as a weed killer?
Weed killer. And weed whipping, we do line trimming around Mount Evergreen, gravestones. So I'm going to move on over to one oh one, seven fifty-two, which is our admin. This is one of our smaller line items, it's a few of the staff people, management of our office. So of course the costs are like the general and cost of step increases, cost of living, things like that. We had to get a new copier, so you'll see that in one oh one, seven fifty-two. Moving through to one oh one, seven fifty-eight, is our Nixon Pool Facility. You'll also see it in our four oh one account, capital projects that we've been working on resurfacing of the pool and updating of our slides and creating a slide contract so that they can come back in every year and make that look beautiful. New sand, we are working on new pumps, so a lot of things going on. And not in this budget, but an important factor of this budget is that we did have a contract, and you'll see it in your notes here, with the Jackson YMCA. We no longer have that contract with the Jackson YMCA, and we were, I don't even know how it happened, but we were able to employ a wonderful, wonderful employee named Alexa Markham. She is fantastic, she's organized, she's great, and she's incredibly certified, which I think she just finished her final certification and has been doing lifeguard training at Jackson High School. We are becoming quickly the largest staff in lifeguarding in the county. So people are coming to Alexa, coming to the pool, coming to our lifeguards. So you're seeing a lot more in fees and like personnel services at Nixon, but that, that's because of the contract is now, now null and void with the YMCA.
Massive bonus with Alexa.
Thank you.
She, she is fantastic. My daughter does the soccer program and.
We got a winner, she's fantastic.
She, she's Johnny on the spot with it, so thank you.
Thank you for saying that, I appreciate, I'll share that with her. One oh one, seven seventy-one is the, one I like to talk about probably the most because it's probably the most leading in name. This budget carries on our parks, grounds, facility maintenance, trail system, downtown, irrigation, and roundabouts. So there's a lot more to meet the eye in one oh one, seven seventy-one. So again, we had our fleet, new fleet operating, our final trucks came through. Vandalism is a daily occurrence in every one of our parks, from garbage dumping to another thing that you'll see in here is our playground. This year we had to go to our insurance company to ask for help in our playgrounds because they were so destroyed. And then we put in some, like, some money in for that, for our copay for our insurance company. And then we put in a line item, working with Heather for next year, for playground repair. And that, that's incredibly important because you have to keep them up. But we have people doing. Um, but we have people, uh, doing firecrackers off them, and you can name a million different things that are happening. So that's what's happening. We have mowing. Troy's gone, but he's been amazing to work with. We will, by the end of the summer, have a concrete, uh, path from the MLK Center to weather wax finalized and complete and eyes on our prize of heading north and east. So, um, we're pretty excited about that trail system ending up and people being able to participate in that. And, um, putting extra efforts, um, into the downtown, getting things, uh, looking good. We're just, we're kind of hitting it differently to kind of combat the problems because we'll put something out, fix it, and then it'll get kind of, uh, you know, something happens to it and people mess up with what we've done. So we're, we have a different system this year. Knocking wood so far, it's worked out pretty good, so we're pretty excited about that. We have a new person downtown. If you see him, his name is Anthony Coleman. He's, he's a joy. He's doing a great job.
Director, what do you think is the solution to reducing vandalism or stealing across these parks? Or like, what, what is something that might work?
I, you know, that's a tou, that's a really tough one. When I, when I, when I call for help, um, it's often like ordinance-based because the limitation of what you can and cannot do. You know, I, I think we need a camera, I'm, one thing I am working on and probably grants is a camera-wide park system, uh, so that we have cameras everywhere. We don't currently. Again, those are hit and miss if you get somebody or not. The police have been great. They have, um, a license plate reader, I think, over by Sharp Park, so that's helped a few times. But we have, um, a lot of people, um, in places that are, are spending a great deal of time and, and not caring for where they're at. So, um, it's a tough one. I think ordinances would probably be the, like, something that the police could react to and, and have something work that way. I, I, I'm not an expert at it, but that's what I, that and cameras and I, it's, um, since 2020, it's been an uptick. It's, it's just gotten worse every single year. And we're now spending a lot of money against that. So it's constant. People just pull up their dump trucks, they're doing construction somewhere, they're pulling their kitchen out, they dump, they dump their kitchen cupboards at Sharp Park. Mattresses, tires, uh, I think one day, I think I said Jonathan, 50-plus tires, um, that we have to dump and take care of. So it does cost a dump and, you know, kind of a big circle.
Are, are we limited in the penalties to just like a civil infraction on that stuff? Or are there criminal?
Typically, yes. It, it depends on the nature of it. Delves into the criminal realm, but it's kind of fact-specific.
Do we utilize any recycling programs, like with the tires?
Oh, we try to. Um, I think in, um, garbage, working with garbage companies is not recycling friendly. So where we, there, it isn't, there isn't money in recycling, so that people are not down for a lot of recycling on those type of things. So we try to work with the people that do.
I guess I meant more, not, not recycling, but more, um, repurposing.
Um, no, I have not, but that's something we could talk about, for sure.
What I'd like to see in, in Sharp Park, and this would only help there and not, not elsewhere with the dumping, I think. And, and I think it would serve to unify it. But I know John Dowell had come up with a plan to really close that part to traffic, to through traffic.
Yes.
And then trails, like, you'd still be able to drive, like, the soccer fields, but you couldn't drive through it. You couldn't drive to, like, you know, the middle of the woods.
You mean my favorite plan on earth? Um, no. I, like, so, John and I and Jonathan, we, we worked on that for a long time. The thing of it is, when we don't explain to people where they should park and what they should do, people just do whatever they want to do. We don't have a system out there. There's roads that could be closed that does save the city money because those are city roads. There's road closures that could be made into trails. Um, there's angled parking, updating parking lots. I think roughly it was like 4 million, I think. Yeah, it was not cheap, but it, it's, uh, something that we can eat away at, like, uh, you know, concreting down Farm Lane. There's a lot of paths you can do, a lot of connections. We were talking about gravel paths in the back of, uh, so there's a lot of opportunities, but it's absolutely something I think will, upfront, a lot of money, but I think it'll save a lot of money down the road.
Can you speak to, uh, as well, and this is a little in the weeds, pardon the pun, but, um, the butterfly gardens downtown?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely. So we are working with a gentleman that we've hired, his name is Sam Danko. Uh, he works for the City of Ann Arbor or contractor for the City of Ann Arbor, um, doing butterfly gardens, rain gardens. Um, he's, he's pretty skilled, he's pretty knowledgeable. We're happy to have him on staff, uh, as part of our part-time staff. We're going to be working together. There's some great plants out there, but there's a lot more that need help. So he knows exactly what to do and how to do it. So we're going to be really excited to be having him join our staff to, to better those. There's a few, um, there's a few of them that might be going away, just proximity, they're like small slices and they're close to the road and get a lot of salt, a lot of traffic, kind of... Yeah. Yeah, so there's, there's a lot. So yeah, but we're really excited about working and beautifying those more. Any other questions before I move forward? Thank you. 296, Recreation Activity Fund, another fun conversation, makes me happy. If you can see, the numbers have gone up. Since 2020, in 2020, people discovered that Parks and Rec pretty much rocks, and they've been participating in our trails and parks and activities. Uh, we are currently in our youth, uh, spring soccer season with 950 participants. Everything's been like that. Our senior program is one of the largest growing, uh, it's called Active Aging with our, uh, Julie Weisbrot, she's really doing a great job. We've got a lot of people participating in activities, uh, softball, our adult sports are coming back. Uh, so we're really excited. I had to go up to Heather, I think, a couple of weeks ago, and I'm like, oh my gosh, uh, people are, people are coming out like crazy this spring. I think we have to change our budget line item because I think we're bringing in more revenue and with that more, um, expense. So, uh, growing, that's all I can say about that. That's amazing. It's going right on up, so I hope it keeps going, uh, because we have a lot of things we can offer and do for people. So that is, um, our 296, which is basically adult, um, activities in our active Jackson program. Uh, next up, we have our 297, Jackson Public Schools Recreation Millage Program. Currently, we are in our own, our old millage, a .5 until July 1, which we will enter into, um, our new millage, uh, .75. And, sorry, my papers are all stuck together. And, um, we're really excited. We're offering new programs. We brought swim lessons back. Um, we're going to be doing more of those at, we're doing more camps. Uh, we're going to be offering more wages, uh, updated supplies, updated equipment. Uh, we're going to have the opportunity to really step up where we need to be versus kind of band-aiding the situation that we have. Uh, so that's going to be really sad, uh, excited. I did talk to Marcus Leon from the Jackson Public Schools on Tuesday night or Monday night, and we did hit the Headley Act, so we will have, uh, to look at what our number's going to be for next year. Because every increase is a little fast. So we'll figure out what that number is, but we're still going to be in really good shape. So any questions on the rec millage?
I, I heard that a couple of various council members, uh, and our city staff did a lot of work to make sure that millage lasts, so.
Absolutely. Those amazing people.
They just had a lot of work to, like, prepare for the increase. I think we just pulled that out of our budget, but it was kind of .75.
A win, a win is a win. As I think the mayor said, the win is a win. 86 votes got us to where we wanted to be. Yeah, like, you know, it was tight, I was kind of freaked out, but it worked out. Ellis Sharp Park, I'll give you a, kind of an overview of all our different budget line items. We have the, uh, you know, golf course, we have the operating fund, we have the mini golf course, we have the learning center and the park itself. 208, 751, uh, revenue's increased by 7.17%, uh, which was really great. Uh, we worked on a ceiling heater, maintenance garage, retained all our golf leagues. Uh, if you drive by Ellis Sharp Park at any point in the winter, uh, there is somebody there playing golf on our simulators. Uh, they're popular. Um, I think a few of you here have been on those simulators. Uh, it's pretty great. And we had over 70 teams that were in playing. 7:00 AM, when I go to grocery store, a grocery store on Sundays, there's people in there golfing. So it's, it's pretty great. Uh, we also retained all our golf leagues, uh, and so working on our four corners update. We've been painting, updating the bathrooms, putting in some, um, concession areas and working on, uh, the golf course is going to come online with our, uh, we, this past year, we've, um, opened up with our rec desk where you can register online for recreation programs. Uh, last year, we were about a 50/50 from people coming in the door or going on the program. I think we're about 80/20 right now of people just doing online, so like coming through the door. There's still people that like to come see us, I love that, come see us, uh, but there's still people doing that. The golf course lessons, um, some different things that are going on at the golf course will now come on our system. And then we're going to be trying to working on tee times and different things on our rec desk system so people can log right in and take care of some of that business. Just trying to meet the people where they're at, make it easy for people. 208, 771 is the park. Ellis Sharp Park, uh, we're working on the booster pump, landscaping, uh, trellises, we've been, the rose garden, bringing it back alive. Really have a great relationship right now with the Ellis Sharp Museum, so that's been really helpful in the overall look. And the greatest thing last month is we had our kayak and canoe launch is in. Uh, we're just waiting to do some little updates and then we'll have a, a wonderful, ribbon cutting ceremony. So we're really excited about that. Also trees, uh, trees, 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 uh, is, you know, storms love to hit Sharp Park. I think it's like a beacon for them, they love it. So that, uh, we're working on that and, um, roadside trimming, uh, disc golf, still going like crazy. Uh, we're working on, uh, some updates with some local, uh, people who are disc golf people that help run our camp, who also work from consumers and a lot of time, the money that, they'll get money to go towards the updates. So it's a great partnership to work together. And then 208, 753 is Ellis Sharp Park Learning Center. Revenue's increased by 26.9%. Uh, reattached our netting over the last month, cutting back brush, maintaining grass areas. Uh, we have moved, if you were there before, it was astroturf, for now it is grass. Love, people love it, the golfers want that, and we're meeting the needs of the golfers. Um, and, uh, working on a new counter area, uh, really when we can, getting out the invasive bush. Ellis Sharp Miniature Golf Course, as you know, was fantastic, opened up, we're cruising, and we're hoping to have more, uh, participants this year. Any questions?
Well, back to the Active Aging and the kayak and canoe launch.
Mm-hmm.
Are you going to do, like, some group kayaking or canoeing thing?
I don't think that, uh, there's the great program that does that, and they're part of this, uh, water, Greater, uh, Grand Ledge, or not Grand Ledge, Grand River Watershed Council, and they'll be handling that area because they have availability for that. So we're, there's tons of ways to grow. We were looking at eventually some lockers for the canoes and kayaks so people can come out and do different things. And, so we're looking towards that. Yes. Will? Sure, be glad to... We're gonna, we're gonna be, um, doing a call and, uh, um, we are currently, we don't have our solid number yet, but it will be more than this past year. We had a meeting two weeks ago with Jackson County came to the table and so did Summit Township, so it's going to be a multi-government push to get as many deer as we can. We cannot guarantee that we get the deer in your yard, but we would definitely will do our best to help with, it really comes down to the maintenance of the deer. Uh, it's not healthy where it's at with the amount of deer that we have, and it's, uh, taking care of them is really what we're doing. Yeah. Exactly. Yeah, you, you start out and you get, like, this year, when they did the study, they got 100 deer in one place. Did I think that they were going to get 80 deer in five hours? I didn't. That happened, so that shows what the populace is. And so we're looking, uh, towards doing a new contract, working with a multi-government hit with that. Anything else? I'll keep that in mind.
I don't think that happens, but, thank you, Kelly. Now we have community development. Tag team back again.
Starsky and Hutch. Good evening, Council. Vice Mayor Dancy, leading the way today. We'll start at, uh, Fund 299, the Administrative Hearings Bureau. The Administrative Hearings Bureau is the judicial, judicial, uh, process. We have a judicial process to handle blight violations. Administrative Hearings Bureau is the bureau that handles those cases. There's a slight increase this year due to uncollectibles, and we moved away from a wage distribution of having a person who was, uh, partially funded out of the building department and housing division. We've gotten rid of a position and a person will be fully designated to the Administrative Hearings Bureau on a part-time basis. Any questions on the Administrative Hearings Bureau? You mean, it's, it's hard to get there. I think what you're, you're asking is, do we work very hard to not have people get to that level? Yes, we give people plenty of opportunity. It's opportunity after opportunity after opportunity, and finally, they end up in the, the bureau in which further opportunities are given by having, um, a very informal conversation in the back room here in which 99.99% of the time, a consent judgment, uh, is garnered out of that conversation in which a stick and care approach is utilized, meaning you're going to get even more time, and if you comply, you'll have, most of the time, no fine and only court cost. So, the process is better than, uh, going to district court, for sure. Any other questions? We'll next go to the Building Demolition Fund. You'll see a humongous increase in, uh, revenue and will be expenditures for this year to the tune of around $3 million more, and that's because we received a SLBA grant from the state of Michigan to tear down the, um, industrial building at Cooper and, uh, closest cross street most people know is North Street, the old industrial fan building, which, uh, was a victim of arson and, um, you know, severely blighted. So we're going to have the state of Michigan paying for that. It's been a long, long process, but that money will be expended on that to remove the blight. Yes.
He doesn't, but I do. Um, it could be as soon as this summer. I did get a note from the land bank today that they'd like us to check another box on, uh, the grant, uh, administration documents. We have to have the land bank meet again and approve a purchasing policy. But the contract has been awarded. We just are waiting for the land bank to stop putting up more hurdles, so...
Could be as soon as this summer.
Could be. Later. But we really thought, when we approved the demo contract, um, at the April land bank meeting, that we were ready to rock and roll. But I literally got a note today from Michelle and Shane's office that said the state land bank has come back with, yeah, another, another little piece of paperwork we need to submit. Typical for the state.
I'm glad you brought that up. Great question. Uninsured house fires are currently covered by the City of Jackson. Sometimes it's covered by Community Development Block Grant Dollars, which Corey will discuss momentarily. If it's not within this certain area that can be handled by Community Development Block Grant Dollars, that's covered by the general fund. We've taken an approach, the last couple of budget cycles, that we are going to come with counsel and ask for a budget amendment when there are houses that need to be taken down with general fund dollars. And let all of you decide collectively through a vote if you feel that you want to spend dollars on demolition. Uninsured, uninsured, yes. Un, un, most of the time... No, not, not. Isn't it remarkable? For your vehicle, you have to, but not for house. What we are doing, we're looking at a process, we're going to be working with the city attorneys off as, as of this morning, after a meeting that I had with staff, is to look to see if we can use the same collection process that we use through judicial services to collect dollars for demos that occur with general fund dollars. Right now, there's about $200,000 outstanding, and we'll get an answer probably Monday or Tuesday from Matt's office. And then we'll start pursuing those through, uh, district court action. Housing, of course, code, Housing and Code Enforcement Fund, 251. You'll see a trend, there is a trend there when you look at the increase. Prior to, uh, my doing a very thorough analysis of this fund, um, a little bit into my tenure fund, a little bit into my tenure as the director, I noticed that there was no wage distribution for some of the staff who was responsible and most fully engaged in the housing enforcement program. They were basically doing work for free and weren't included within that budget. I then moved part of their wage distribution to the housing course, code enforcement fund. I made some adjustments and we'll make future adjustments also to staffing levels to make sure that we balance that out. You will also see on expenditures and revenue page where we had a very low amount coming in this year. On revenue side, that's because, we will always have that every third year because there are no registrations coming in and there are fewer inspections that happen in the third year. I, this, meaning this budget, I have, I have to be very thorough in my analysis of this because this is one of the few budgets I look at and it's a three-year window because a large amount of money always comes in at the beginning of the inspection cycle for housing inspection program. And I have to look at that in a three-year block of time versus just a one-year block of time. I have to be very aware of the revenue and expenditures that I have in that fund to make sure I don't fall out of line. We are spending down the fund balance considerably, which isn't bad. Spending on the fund balance, in this fund especially, which is a very litigious fund in action by the city in which we're accused of having a lot of money in the pot there that's not being spent. Well, the, the numbers prove it here that we don't. Our fund balance is being spent down and likely in '26, '27, we've spent down to darn near zero. So unless we get a lot of collections of the uncollectibles, which are holding around 20% uncollectibles. Are there any questions on that fund?
Just on the three-year cycle, is it, I, can you help me understand how that three-year cycle works and why it's not, like, why is the first year twice as heavy as the third year?
Back in 2012, when we went to a different system, we had an inspection program since 1977, but we went to a two-year inspection cycle, very uniform cycle. Owners received a letter in the mail saying you need to register and begin the process of this inspection cycle. The people who were very responsible went in and they registered right away. I got a whole bunch of people on the calendar of events to be happening in our department. And then as you lead into the beginning of the second year, when we were in a two-year, you have the people who are a little slow to react, but they ultimately got in and they did register and got on the calendar to have their house inspected. The people who we had to chase down are the people we're facing now in the three-year cycle. Because that cycle, once you start, kind of stays around the same time of the year every cycle. So you, you in July, you began your process every two years in July. Now it's every three years in July. So we only have a certain number of inspections that will occur per year. And the people, basically what we're into right now, the third year, are the people who really just put their head in the sand and we had to chase. And there's far fewer than them than the responsible people.
So it's not just arbitrary, like, is the?
No, no, it's not. And we are actually going to smooth that out. What we are going to do, and we're working through this now, are the properties and owners who tend to be compliant at the initial, we're actually gonna, they're gonna get more time. And that's not a bad thing. They're gonna get more in time because we're gonna smooth that out. We're gonna contact them and say, would you like to have more time? People we know that are snowbirds and they're not here for the inspection, but would like to be, we're gonna ask them, hey, would you like to hold this off until spring when you get back? We're gonna very much try and work with our customers in order to smooth that out over three years. So now we have basically 6,000 units to do over three years versus 6,000 over two. I have reduced my number of inspectors already, and I may continue to do that in the future, but I can only reduce it so much.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Any other questions on that one? Building Department Fund. In these funds I'm talking about, the ones I just covered here with housing and the, the building, they're not covered by general fund dollars. These are fee-based. So we're not taking the general fund money to cover the building department. It's all inspections. That includes your electrical, plumbing, mechanical, building. You will see where there is also a trend, a little bit, it went up and then it went down. 749-390 back in 2324. I talked about how the chief building official was not allocated on a wage distribution out of the housing code enforcement fund. Well, we did have to move part of his salary to that because he is the one legislative responsible for the enforcement of that. So we moved some dollars over there. Thank goodness, this fund is doing very well because we're doing so much building. And I think Heather talked earlier about the, the increase in revenue. And I like to compliment Corey especially on his efforts to make sure we get more housing stock because the more housing stock we get and the higher value, we get more income taxes so we can provide better services. So, great job, Corey. That fund stays pretty stable, but we are getting more dollars in because there's a lot more building going on and hopefully there'll be a lot more building here in the future. Are there any questions on the Building Department Fund, 249?
If it's fees versus general fund, what's, what's to stop or prevent continuously saying, oh, we need, we need to keep coming back to, we need to keep coming back to this house and finding something there each time? So there's, so it's generating more fees?
You pay for a, I guess, what's to stop a police officer from stopping everybody going down the street for five over? Anything that's enforcement-based, you just have to enforce equally and equitably in your community. But if somebody installs a thermostat properly on the wall and the code officer goes there and it's properly installed, it's just passed. It's not ambiguous. It's very much specific. Yeah, we're talking about two different codes. Oh, you, oh, back to Housing Enforcement Fund then. That was 251. So when you're talking about the Housing Code Enforcement Fund, that's a very simple process. The code officer goes there, enforces the International Property Maintenance Code according to how it is written. And if there's a violation, that person is given three months to make a repair. So if a plug doesn't work and the code officer tests the plug, and the plug works now after the three months, it's in compliance. So if a code officer did lie and say, no, that, that wasn't working, then they could, the customer could contest that to the chief building official. But I haven't found one accusation of that to be found true in my five years as the director of the department. So, largest, saving the best for last, or close to the best. Let me cover the brown field before I get into planning. There's a brown field, I didn't give you a copy of this one, but we are the recipients of a $500,000 EPA grant that has pretty much run its course. There's proposed $30,000 left, but there's currently projects in the queue through the brownfield authority that will be spent down likely. There was 246-782 spent down in '23, '24, '24, '25, 223, 218. So, I mean, it's been a great grant and I think that we'll have Fishback probably apply for future grants for the EPA because it is good for us to be able to provide that service to get a phase one and phase two done for persons who want to do a development. Planning and zoning, 101701. It has been, if you can believe it, this year, about 10 years since our last master plan. It's been a long time, right? The Zoning Enabling Act requires that you reevaluate the current plan that you're on every five years. So our first look at that was about 20, 20 or so. There's kind of a short look at it, if you will. It wasn't a redo, and you, Connor, can tell you. It's more like, yes, it does still fit the need and the purpose of our community. Are we still going in the right direction in 2020? Yeah, we were. Now we need to see if we still continue in the right course. So what I will be asking of you is to approve $150,000 to put out for bid, a company to help guide us on that course to embark on a new master plan, which significantly will increase the planning and zoning budget by that $150,000. There is a slight increase, very slight increase, to the salaries and wages from what was requested in '23, '24, which was 169, 229 to 174, 690. I don't think that's too bad considering the cost of inflation since 2023. So the salaries and wages is not the big thing driving this increase. It is definitely going to be the increase in contractual services for that plan. And I hope that council sees fit to approve that. It's definitely needed and we want to stay in line with what the Zoning Enabling Act and Planning Enabling Act state. Are there any questions on planning and zoning? We use, we use Beckett Raider. We actually, you know, to address that, councilman, we are actually going to, in our approach to it, we're gonna look at what is required by the Zoning Enabling Act and Planning Enabling Act and anything required by state statute, local ordinance. And we're likely, I'm not, I don't think I'll put out for bid the Cadillac. Okay, I think we put, we bought the Cadillac last time and I think we had a Chevette budget. I think probably this time, we will do what we have to do to meet the needs of the community and the requirements of law and be smart with our budget. I think fiscal responsibility in that is the most prudent thing. And so that's what we'll be, we'll be fiscally responsible in our approach to that.
There's some vanity, vanity in last, but that's the plan.
I tried to be, I tried to really dance around that.
What's the difference between the, the master plan and the Drive Jackson? That like?
So the master plan is land use. We're just talking about how, what gets built, how it gets built where. The Drive Jackson is more of like a strategic, what do we want the county to look like over a certain period of time and who is, will be involved in that work and making those decisions?
So is that something that we can just kind of, did we chip in money for that?
We did, yeah.
Is that something that we can just tack on to the Drive Jackson thing? Does it save funds?
There, there, there's, there's no savings to add because they're completely different. Like, this is land use for city land and future land use. The other stuff, Drive Jackson's more, more higher level type of thinking that touches every different aspect of people's lives in Jackson.
I ran through a lot of divisions. My department's made up of several of them. And I want to make sure you, if you have any questions in any of the divisions, that you feel like you've had time to ask them. So I'm opening up time for questions in any of the divisions I covered now before Corey gets up here.
Corey's talking about CDBG?
Yes.
You get one minute per letter. C, D, B, G.
No questions, I see. Thank you very much for your time. If you have any questions, call me. Thank you.
We're fading fast up here, buddy.
Lock in. Good evening, council. I appreciate the chance. And I'm sorry, Mr. Green, to burst your bubble, but I'm gonna talk about three different funds and eight grant buckets. So if I get a minute for every letter I'm covering, I think I get about 45. Well, then I better get moving. Let's talk about, let's talk about Fund 234 first, please. This is your MISH grant fund, which if you're familiar, we just talked about this at the last council meeting. This should go relatively quickly. This is a grant bucket that covers $880,000 of direct allocation from the state of Michigan Housing Development Authority. You'll notice that we had budgeted to spend almost all of it this year and we did not. I think as we covered at the last council meeting, there was a delay with MISH to as far as getting these funds out. Thankfully, you so thoughtfully approved the construction contract at your last meeting. All of the MISH funds, both $800,000 for construction and $80,000 for administration, which is internal costs for the CD department. All of that will be expended within the next fiscal year. There will not be any left. Construction will begin in the next two months and must be finished by the end of December 25. These funds have to be spent by April of '26, so we will have no choice but to spend them within the fiscal year. And of course, we want to do that. As a reminder, those will be for four visitable homes. Any questions on that one? All right, we're gonna go look at Fund 280 now. This is housing stability, which covers two additional grants, both the My Hope bucket and the state allocation bucket. We'll start with My Hope. These are again, direct allocation funds from the state of Michigan Housing Development Authority or MISHDA. The My Hope funds have been used for rehabilitation of homes. We've stacked those with our typical CDBG rehab funds and also some ARPA rehab funds that I'll talk about in a minute. That was a $250,000 grant. We will expend all of those funds within the fiscal year that we are in right now. There may be a carryover of one or two projects that just don't get paid back by the state on time based on their billing timeline. I don't think so. It is May and we are ready to bill almost all of them by the end of this month. So that would give the state 30 days to provide the funds to us. So again, my, my assumption and what you see on paper is that we will be finished with this grant bucket by the end of the fiscal year and now, unless there is an issue. The state allocation bucket is the newest of them. That's a million dollars that came from Senator DeSouschink's office. We are splitting that three ways. The city gets a third, Residents in Action gets a third, and the Housing Commission gets a third. Then there's another $100,000 in administrative fees that the city is utilizing because the city is managing the entire bucket and distributing those funds to each of those organizations. Those funds have to be expended by September of 2026. So far, we have spent none of them. We really could just start spending them about two months ago, once we got everything approved. We have not received any reimbursement requests yet from RIA or the JHC. So once those start coming in, we're gonna start paying those out. Right, we're estimating that we'll spend about $595,000 in the next fiscal year. That's definitely an estimate at this point because we have yet to spend any of them. And that is really dependent on what RIA and JHC bring our way. Keeping in mind, they've got to be spent by September of '26. I would guess we'll spend at least that much this year and, and if not, a little bit more to make up for the carryover of what we didn't spend this year. And to back up for a second, I misspoke. The city has spent $25,000 out of that bucket so far this year. That's not reflected there, but I just wanted to make sure I was accurate in my numbers.
And that's the housing stability fund?
It is. You're welcome. Any other questions on Fund 280? All right, we're gonna look at my favorite one last, and that's Fund 218, Affordable Housing Development Board Fund. This covers the 100 Homes program and it also covers the Expanded Rehabilitation Program. There was also extra money in here that covered some of our, our ARPA projects, including the homeless prevention work, the homeless hotel work that we did in collaboration with Residents in Action, and also some funds that have been used to cover maintenance on TA Wilson. Let's start with that number. In particular, we've got a little bit of money that is set aside and it's not showing up there, and that's okay. But in some of the other paperwork that you've got, there's some other money that's proposed for utilities and other expenses on TA Wilson for the next fiscal year. That may not happen since that sale may also then be finalized. So these numbers, right, these numbers were made before that. So I think essentially those will go away, which is good news. But let's talk about Expanded Rehab, which comes out of that ARPA fund. Again, these are S L R, S L, don't, don't look at me with those eyes, Heather. I hate those letters. F L F R F? That's the one. I just always call them ARPA because I can't stand all the other ones. Under the Expanded Rehab Bucket, again, that is been, that has been used to offer greater rehabilitation services to our residents. We'll be done with that bucket in the next fiscal year. It will all be gone. We have to spend it by December 26. As we know, with ARPA funds, it will be gone before that. I think we've got about $110,000 left that is unallocated. It will be gone. Those are really great funds that have been used to just add more meat, if you will, to the other rehab work that we've, that we've done for so many years. For the 100 Homes program, we are at 48 approved buyers as of today. We're almost at that 50 mark. So the numbers that you see in front of you assume that we will spend down the remainder of the $25,000 DPA in the next fiscal year. I think we will. I think we'll be really, really close. The reality is that we've got to spend that by December of '26 too, but we've got to start construction well enough in advance to get those homes done in time to pay them out because I'm not giving any money back to treasury. So we're gonna be really close to zeroing that budget out in the next fiscal year. We're moving full steam ahead. It's summer building season, so we're breaking ground on as many as we can get our hands on. I don't think you need me to go into the weeds on the success of that program. I think everybody knows that it's working really well and I appreciate council supporting that from the beginning. I'm gonna talk about four other grant buckets that aren't here and I'm gonna go fast. These are my letter grant buckets, Mr. Green. CDBG Home, CDBG CV, which is COVID money, and Home ARP, which is also COVID money. As you know, we are entitlement community. We receive both CDBG and Home Funds from HUD every year. This is not anywhere in the budget review. I'm just gonna cover it really quickly. You're gonna look at our five-year consolidated plan next week at your meeting. That's gonna cover what we anticipate to be revenue from those grant buckets. CDBG is typically about 1.3 million and Home is typically about 300,000. We don't have our final numbers yet, but we hopefully will in time for that meeting. They're just a little bit late from HUD. The other two buckets that I think are really interesting are the CDBG CV bucket and the Home ARP bucket. CDBG CV came around during COVID. We have about $130,000 and change left. That bucket will be used completely during the next fiscal year to fund a trail and park bench project in Loomis Park in collaboration with our Parks Department and using forced account labor with our Public Works Department. Really excited about that. Thank you, Vice Mayor Dancy, for the support on that. And then there's the Home ARP bucket, which if you're familiar, will be building transitional rental housing, both in the Flatiron District and in the King MLK area. We're gonna do We're gonna do four homes in the next fiscal year, but that's a 1.1 million dollar bucket. We probably will not have it used up in the next fiscal year. Keep in mind that we have until 2030 to spend those funds. So we're gonna make a pretty solid dent this year and then if you remember, we're gonna evaluate how each of the two nonprofits did, uh, based on performance of construction. And then we can, uh, I'll bring you back some proposals to award, uh, remaining funds based on performance. Those are the eight grant buckets that we are currently managing in the Community Development Department. Any questions on, on any of those?
I'm sorry, what was the name of the last grant market?
Home ARP. Home, Home, uh, is called the Home Investment Partnership Program, which does not match with the letters Home. Thank the federal government for that. Ah, thank you. Welcome Home Organization and, uh, Kings Community Homes. Thank you. Appreciate your time this evening.
Thanks Cory.
Okay.
See, the best will last.
We have the clerk followed by the attorney.
The attorney is last.
Well, they say the best will last.
All right, so, good evening, and I'm gonna try to keep this as brief as possible and still give you all of the information that you will need. The Clerk's Office handles two funds. One is, um, Account 215, and that's what supports Council, licenses, and handles the record-keeping for the city. Typically, this budget doesn't have a lot of movement. Sometime in personal services, depending on the employees, whether or not they have a family. So their benefit package may affect this a little bit more. But we keep this pretty much the same year over year. We factor in things like, um, inflation and, um, the transfer of how we manage Council. Like, right now, we print packets in the office. So our material and supplies go up because it's not being shared across all departments. So really, that's the only movement that you see in this fund. And 262, which is elections, that one is a little bit more tricky. We've had, basically, we have three elections within an election in even years now. So we have to do early voting, absentee voting, and election day voting. The nine days of early voting, that was kind of, we were all blind at what that actually would cost. And if you look at, um, our projected versus what we were budgeted for last year, it has gone down. So some of those things, the state covered, some of them were how we got reimbursed for other things late by the state. So it's kind of a juggling act of when we can account for the money that we do get reimbursed. But this proposed budget includes three elections. Citywide election in August, November, and then potentially in May. That's why the, um, you see like a $60,000 increase. We don't know if we're gonna have a May election next year, but we still need to budget for it. August, a special election, if we have a special election. August, we have, um, the primary and one ward. So those numbers will come down, but we had no way of knowing that when we submitted this information. So really, that accounts for any changes in our budget.
How much is it to do early elections?
Early voting, we got reimbursed by the state up to $15 an hour for inspectors. But we paid more than that, um, to our inspectors in our chairs. So the state covered a portion of it, um, but we were on the hook for the rest. So it cost us about $8,000 in excess of what the state reimbursed us for the nine days of early voting, for each election. So for the, the presidential primary is covered 100% by the state. August, November, it cost us about $8,000 in excess, just for early voting.
Are we doing early voting, is, I'm sorry, is it required every time?
No, just for state and federal elections.
Thank you, Andrea.
You're welcome.
Now, we're gonna have Matt.
I'll stay here at the dais if you don't mind, so I go to the lectern and I'll activate oral argument mode and be much more verbose. So.
Yeah, they'll call us your honor. That'd be awesome.
Yeah, you could be Mr. Chief Justice if you'd like, Freddie. Members of court. So we have about a 3.2% budget increase year over year. 82% of which, or about 24,000, is actually attributable to employee costs, that's wage increases, call up. We're much like the Assessors' Office in that regard. 18% approximately of that amount is our software and hard costs. That's our Westlaw, which increases every year. Archive, social, and Next Request. We've gone online to streamline our FOIA process because we have a lot of FOIAs that we process. Just to ask, uh, Roberta, our new paralegal, who's learning from retiring Deb tomorrow, how much, how many FOIAs we get, uh, daily, uh, certainly dozens a week, depending on the week. So, um, that's about $5,100 of the soft, in software costs. Uh, we do share an archive social program with JPD. We share that cost that archives some of the social media that JPD has on, uh, their social media for crime investigation purposes, which is, which is oftentimes very helpful. So our other office equipment and maintenance, um, it's, it's relatively simplistic budget, again, much like the Assessors. We're, we're people. We're not fire trucks and, and large expenditures, but we do, do, as the summary provides, do, do a lot in our office for all the different departments. Uh, we're kind of the, the hub of the wheels, as it were, and, uh, all the various spokes rely on our office for a lot of different legal work. Civil litigation, AHB, as Shane went through, um, obviously our prosecutions, anything district court related, that's collections, that's prosecutions for OWIs, domestics, anything that's in our city code. So it's relatively similar to last year's budget as to what's proposed, with the exception of, as I say, about 82% of it being attributable to just normal, uh, employee costs year over year. Any questions? Uh, anyone has? I'm happy to entertain.
Do we ever like sharing our annual report, how many FOIAs we do every year?
We do.
And like, how many people?
Not from.
That would be interesting.
Not from how many people, but I can tell you, we're gonna start.
It's like six.
Top 10 of FOIA requests?
We don't have 10 doing all those FOIA requests. There's like four.
The top two or three, um, top one the last two months. But we do, we do, it's in the annual report, the totals we have. There, there are actually probably hundreds, if not over a thousand, different requesters, from engineering firms to John Q. Public. So it's a lot, but we, we handle the floodgates.
Is that all, Roberta?
Oh, no. No.
Oh, no, yeah.
Deb, I, I joked, Roberta, she's been on board for two weeks. She's had to, she's had to learn about 2.3 years' worth of information per day she's been working from Deb, based on her 20 years of experience. So, uh, she's learning a lot, but trying not to overwhelm her and she's doing a great job. And Mrs. Jonathan said, yeah, it's a lot more than FOIAs. It's, it's budgets, it's.
Insurance.
Insurance.
Customer service.
Customer service, yeah.
Well, with so many FOIAs, I was just hoping that was, that was their focus.
It's a lot of what she's doing now, quite frankly, but she's doing a good job.
And what time is Deb leaving?
Um, um, she can't be fired tomorrow, so she can probably leave whenever she likes, but she'll be late afternoon. She may still ta- stay till five. I might make her stay till five at one, I don't know.
When does she come in?
She's here by eight.
All right, since there's no question on the Attorney's Office, briefly, um, the Managers Department is, uh, staying the same as far as personnel goes. So all increases, um, would just be related to the personnel expenses. We have three full-time employees there now. Three full-time, uh, equal employees for next year. Not ma- no major, uh, increases, um, from the 2024, 2025 budget to this year's proposed budget. So just wanted to point that out, make sure you heard from me on that one. And then briefly, again, um, since he's not here, Treasurer's Office, uh, Marty put together a very conservative budget. Actually goes down in the Treasurer's Office and I think it's a level in tax, income tax administration. So kudos to him. You got a lot in almost two and a half hours. We have 2019 days until we need to, um, uh, propose, I mean, uh, approve this, excuse me, tongue-twisted tonight. Uh, we have a public hearing at our next council meeting, um, where if the public comes and asks questions, we'll be ready to answer as best we can. But in the meantime, between now and when this needs to be approved, um, please consider, please take one more look at it, ask questions to staff, email out. Take your time to go through it because we fed a lot tonight and it's, I can see it on people's faces, so.
Is the hearing, when you say next, do you mean on Tuesday or?
Tuesday. Tuesdays are hearing, yep. So, we ready to do this with the public. They could've come tonight, too, if they wanted. Thanks, Hammond Tree.
Oh, we got citizen comments. Mr. Hammond Tree, come on up here. Oh, God, no, really?
Oh, my God.
Talk about a guy who can't read the room.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I have no comments tonight. Thank you.
So, no comments, uh, looking for.
Who's gonna make the motion?
Who's gonna make that motion? Motion to adjourn? Can I hear it going once? Going twice? So, who, you see first? Who, you said first?
I said second.
Who said, who said first?
Just call the roll.
So move! See you next week. Why are you laughing at me here with that guy?